Yeah, thanks. Good morning. Due to COVID-19, Committee of Adjustment and Public Hearings are being conducted electronically via WebEx Webinar, an online digital platform and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. Participants who registered in advance will be connecting to the hearing using a phone or compatible electronic device and are able to make their presentations to committee using WebEx Webinar. Participants will be muted automatically upon entry. And when your item is called, participants will be unmuted one person at a time by the moderator. Please mute your devices until called upon to speak. Today, Committee of Adjustment is offering attendees the option to appear by video. Attendees who registered in advance to attend by video will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when their item is called. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time, and at all other times, your video will be disabled and you will be reinstated as an attendee. Committee of Adjustment staff will assist us by moderating the WebEx Webinar platform, including sharing presentation material received within the written submission deadline. Members of the public and applicants are not allowed to use the Share Screen function or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist's role if you fail to respect this instruction. My name is Nancy Omen, and I will be chairing this hearing. Panel members participating via WebEx Webinar who can be seen and heard are Nimrod Salaman, Aaron Chang, Peter Reed, and Yim Chan. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and it is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment for the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to the property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, consent to sever property to create new laws. Anyone attending today who wants to receive a copy of the committee's decision for an application must submit a written request by email to the general email address for the Committee of Adjustment Toronto and East York District Office. Please include your name, address, and an email address. Committee of Adjustment and T-Lab notifications and appeal updates will be sent by email only. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body known as T-Lab or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Appeal instructions will be set out at the bottom of the committee's decision. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. And when the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the member into committee for the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. And I'll comment when you're reaching the five-minute mark. When addressing the committee, please speak slowly and clearly state your name and address. Please confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first with a presentation of the application. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have completed their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent will be unmuted and will have an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion, and the application will be taken into committee for a decision. When a presentation is not required, panel members may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice are informed of the changes. Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer, have the minutes of the last Committee of Adjustment public hearing been confirmed by the members?
Good morning, Madam Chair and committee members. August 10th minutes.
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the minutes for the August 10th meeting? That's moved by Mr. Reed. Do I have a seconder? Okay, that's seconded by Mr. Salaman. All in favor? Okay, that carries, and the minutes have been adopted. Are there any declarations of interest by staff or panel members in this morning's session? Okay, seeing none. Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer, are there any files to be closed?
See none for this morning.
Any deferral requests?
See none for the this morning.
Okay, thank you. All right, the first item is item number one is 176 Westview Boulevard. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a list of comparable Committee of Adjustment decisions from the agent. We have a nine-signature petition in support, and that includes both adjacent neighbors. Okay, I don't have any speakers other than the agent. Do I have the agent on the line?
Yes, you do. My name is Ray Barkley.
Is there any way you can speak up a bit? I can barely hear you.
Yes, my name is Ray Barkley. Unfortunately, I'm on the telephone. I don't have a microphone connected to our computer here at the office.
That's okay. You're sounding much clearer now than when you first started. I'm not sure we need a presentation. Let me see, I think we have three variances before us. Do we need a presentation? No. Are there any questions, panel members, for the agent? No? Okay, Mr. Barkley, we don't have any questions. The committee members are ready to make a decision on this one. Is there anything you want to add that's not in the submissions?
I think we've covered it in the submission.
Okay, thank you, sir. We'll take it into committee then. Panel members, Mr. Salaman.
I think that the variances are minor in nature, and I would move approval with no conditions.
Okay, Mr. Salaman moves approval. I think Mr. Reed beat you, Ms. Chan, so I'll go with Mr. Reed seconds. All in favor? Okay, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number two, 804 Shaw Street. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, two photographs of trees on the property. We have an arborist report from Central Tree Care. I am only showing the agent as a speaker. Do I have the agent on the line?
Hi, Raymond, you've been unmuted?
Yes, hi, it's Ray McCarthy from Vision Media Architectural Services.
Okay, panel members, we have two variances before us. I don't think we need a presentation. Anyone have any questions for the agent? Okay, not seeing any questions. Mr. McCarthy, we're ready to take this into committee for a decision. Anything you want to add that's not in the submissions?
No, thank you. It has been documented. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let's take it into committee, panel members, for a decision. Mr. Reed and then Ms. Chan.
Sorry, Yim. I think this is a very reasonable application, and I think the way it's being masked to kind of read as it's within the roof has been is a successful approach. And I think there are other examples in the neighborhood of this type of third-floor addition. So unless Yim has something else to add, I'm happy to move approval of this application. I think its impacts are very minimal with no conditions.
Okay, and Ms. Chan, you want a second then? All right, so motion to approve moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Ms. Chan, all in favor? Okay, that carries unanimously. Item number three, 49 Beatrice Street. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, previous decision affecting the property. We have email correspondence from Transportation Services. They did not express any concerns. We have a report from planning in our supplemental agenda regarding a condition for a planter, and forestry is asking for condition number two. We have 24 form letters in support, and that includes, I believe, one of the adjac-- no, I scratched out my notes. So we have 24 form letters in support, and that's from residents on Beatrice Street. Yeah, they're all on Beatrice Street. And we received two more in our supplemental agenda yesterday. And we have correspondence in opposition from number 51, which is adjacent. And I am showing them listed as speakers today. So do I have the agent on the line?
Yes, you do.
Can you just state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Giorgio Frasca from Frasca Design Plan.
Hi, good morning.
Hello.
Staff, do you have the opposition? Yeah. Okay, sir, we have one opposition speaker. Can I ask you to do a presentation no more than five minutes? And before you start, is there anything you want staff to put up on the screen?
Yes, we have added some, a cover letter with appendices A to D. And probably by starting with Appendix D first, you can start with that, which is pretty much is a map that shows all the locations of these letters in favor and location to our.
Okay, do we have that? Oh, I haven't. He wants the map with the locations of the letters, if he can find it. That one?
It's an actual map. Keep on going.
Keep going, okay. Keep going, that one? Which one? That one? I need you, I can't hear you anymore, so I'm not sure if you're away from your mic. But before you start, just if you can just do a test, just say testing, so we know if we can hear you.
Testing?
Uh, barely.
Testing, I, I haven't moved, so hopefully.
I could hear you fine before. I don't know what happened.
I haven't moved from where I was. I'm sitting at my desk.
Okay, maybe move closer.
What about now?
Yeah, that's good. Okay, go ahead, and we'll start the clock now.
Okay. Good morning, Madam Chair and committee members. My name is Giorgio Frasca. I'm from Frasca Design Planning. We are agents representing the owners of 49 Beatrice. Our client is seeking relief from the variances identified in the public hearing notice proposing to legalize and to maintain the conversion from one primary suite and one secondary suite into one primary and three secondary suites. We note that the application package contains 24 letters of support. And as you can see on this Appendix D, we are the, our application is the dotted red and the letters of support are on all the items in green. The first variances we are seeking relief from is restrictions on a pedestrian entrance or a secondary suite. If you can please go to Appendix A further up. This pedestrian entrance leading exclusively to a secondary suite is not permitted in a front wall of a semi-detached house. You can, right here, you can even at this one over here. The addition, the additional pedestrian entrance is to accommodate access to the stair enclosed or leading to the secondary suite. The addition of only one door allows for a primary and three secondary suites to be created within this existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling. The bylaw does permit a pedestrian entrance leading exclusively to a secondary suite in a townhouse scenario. 32, 36, and 41 Beatrice Street, for example, have two or three doors off the front wall, as you can see over here. The immediate neighborhood, if you can scroll to Appendix B, please. The immediate neighborhood also contains 5, 4, and 3 buildings are shown in Appendix B. These addresses include 31, 32, 106, 116 Beatrice with four units, 357 Euclid has five units, 41, 120, 190 Beatrice has three units apartments. The second variance we are seeking relief from is secondary suite interior floor area. If you can please scroll to Appendix C. Again, the interior floor area of a secondary suite or all secondary suites must be no more than 45% of the interior floor area. Our proposal is at 67. To note that our application does not involve an increase in area to the existing building or modifications to the building footprint. Their proposal is for a building containing one primary and three secondary suites that could otherwise have been a semi-detached house with one primary and one secondary suite. 336 Manning, for example, has been approved as interior floor space for 116% for two secondary suites, while 357 Euclid has been approved at 64% for four secondary suites, which is very similar to what we have. The third variance we are seeking relief from is parking. The required minimum number of parking spaces for a semi-detached house within three secondary suite is three. Our proposal will have two parking spaces on the lot. In all cases of the matters cited earlier, the minor variances from the parking space bylaw were granted and viewed as minor. We note that there is no letter of opposition from City Transportation as well. To approve the minor variance, we understand the Committee of Adjustment must be satisfied that the general intent and purpose of the city's zoning bylaw and the city official plan is maintained. The proposal is appropriate for development of the land and/or building, and the variance requested is minor. We believe that the proposal keeps with the general intent and purpose of the city's zoning bylaw. The variances requested with effect to the entrances satisfies the test criteria in that they support and facilitate the privacy needs of access to the secondary suite as seen in other houses on the same street with three or four suites, as noted in the appendix. The increased unit size proposed helps each secondary suite enjoy as large of a living space as possible within the existing building envelope, which presents a varied housing type. We also believe that the general intent and purpose of the city official plan is maintained. The official plan recognizes the neighborhoods are not static and will evolve in a manner that respects the existing physical attributes of a building, including streets, lots, setbacks, and residential dwellings. The official plan discusses the different range of housing types in a neighborhood, and this proposal improves and modernizes the available housing supply to provide a diversity of housing options. There's an opinion that proposal further will add to the city's so-called middle housing stock. In conclusion, we believe that the additional residential units created are an example of what is sought to be achieved by the official plan and other initiatives, city initiatives, like expanding housing options in neighborhoods, the multiple study report. Furthermore, this increase of housing options occurs in an area which has an excellent public transit service support. Their proposal reinforces the city objective of a moderate densification while not disrupting the built forms of the existing neighborhood. In addition to transportation, it had no objections to our application. City planning staff is in support of application as well. We discussed our application with them and have agreed to incorporate an additional plant with the front of the yard beside the exterior stairs. At this point, I respectfully submit the Committee of Adjustment this letter on behalf of the owner, and I recommend the approval of the variances on the grounds that it meets the fourth test under Section 45-1 of the Planning Act. Thank you for your time, and please let me know if you have any questions. One last item is the owner would like to have a few words if possible.
Well, I can give them one minute because it's usually five minutes for the application itself, for either the agent or the applicant. I was actually going to ask you if you, I should have asked you at the beginning if you're speaking on behalf. So which one? I have two listed here.
Damian.
Damian, okay, I'll give him one minute now then, okay?
Good morning.
Hi, just identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Damian Hornich. I'm one of the owners of 49 Beatrice.
All right, go ahead. We'll start the clock now.
Okay, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to take a moment to address the issues raised in the letter of opposition. First of all, I'm more grateful for the 24 letters of support from other neighbors, including one from our immediate neighbor to the south. And all we wanted to say is, with respect to the letter, to the extent that it raises any issues of neighborliness, in my view and in working with our planner, it didn't see the letters raising issues from a planning perspective, but we have made numerous attempts since becoming owners of the property to understand and address our neighbors' concerns. And we've just, we've been rebuffed throughout that time, so we haven't been able to meet with them. So we have done so in good faith and really have tried, but we just have not been allowed to meet with them or have any opportunity to speak with them. Otherwise, as you heard earlier in the submission, the issues that were before the committee the first time around with the previous owner are not the same issues that were.
I have to ask you to wrap up. Your agent will be able to rebut for five minutes after the opposition speaks, and if you want to, like, split it between the two of you, that's okay.
No, that's fine, Madam Chair. That's all I wanted to say.
All right, thanks a lot, Damian.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have the opposition on the line?
Hi, Matt, you've been unmuted?
Thank you very much for hearing my concerns today. I just wanted to address a few things.
Sorry to cut you off. Just need you to state your name and address for the record.
Sorry, my name is Matt Burns. I live Beatrice Street, which is a semi-detached house attached to 49 Beatrice.
Okay, you said 51, right? Because it cut you off there for a second.
Correct, yes, yeah, 51 Beatrice.
Okay, so we're going to start the clock now, and you have five minutes.
I just wanted to address the previous speaker. The owner has suggested that we have rebuffed any attempts at communicating, which is not true. My wife and I have had two conversations with, I believe, the speaker's wife, and quite frankly, she wasn't accepting the reasons why we were against them having four units. And the reasons being, back in 2017, when the first application was put in, we went to several Community of Adjustment meetings. And at the first one, the agent was not present, and the Committee of Adjustment suggested that we may meet in good faith with the previous owner, which we did. And subsequent to that, we met with the owner's architects and went over an adjusted plan for a two-bedroom apartment, which we agreed to. And then subsequent to that, it's apparent that they went against the Committee of Adjustment's ruling in our good-faith agreement to put in two apartments and not four. During the actual construction of it, we had several incidents of harassment and even physical threats against us. They created holes in our roof that allowed raccoons to come in. They destroyed a tree. And they've put two air conditioning units right on the property line and put a fence on their side of the property behind it. So it essentially looks like we have two air conditioning units on our front lawn. I do also want to state that I noticed one of the letters from the supporting neighbors is from Ms. Nguyen from 41 Beatrice, who is the former, her and her husband, Michael Ho, are the former owners of 49 Beatrice Street, who have contravened the previous agreements that were in place with the Committee of Adjustment. And then subsequent to actually them putting in the four units, they also applied again in May of 2020 to amend the zoning to allow four units instead of what they had agreed to of two. We are not wealthy people. I do not have an agent representing us, and it feels like I have acted in good faith and have followed the guidelines of the city. And it seems like the city has not followed through with its responsibilities of making sure that the Committee of Adjustments are adhered to. And, you know, at the end of the day, I suspect this will probably go through, which is really disappointed, disappointing. And the last thing that I would say as well is the two owners of the property are not currently inhabiting the property. So if they're claiming it's their primary residence, I don't see any evidence to support that. And as well, the parking issue. As noted, their garage only has two, and I've seen at least two residents of the building also have street parking. And street parking is at a minimum at best. And we are in a time of climate crisis, and I don't believe that four-plus parking or cars should be allowed for one structure in Toronto. So that is, that are all my comments. I thank you for your time today.
Okay, thank you, sir. Panel members, do you have any questions for the speaker? Ms. Chan?
Yes, I have a very small question to the speaker. You have mentioned that they didn't follow what was permitted and build extra units. But can you tell us what will impact that you actually have experience of these extra units?
Well, I mean, as I said, there's parking issues. There are, the potential, one of my greatest concerns is right now, they are long-term rental units. In the past, the previous owners used it as an Airbnb rental property, and we had numerous problems with that. On the other side of us, which is 53 Beatrice, it seems to be a rooming house. I don't know what the actual zoning is of that, but we've had multiple issues with the residents of that place as well. So, you know, going forward, more apartments, more people, more problems, quite frankly. And I, you know, that's been our past experience, and I don't see why that would change.
Any other questions for Mr. Burns? Okay, thank you very much, sir. Mr. Frasca, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we're going to start the clock. You have five minutes to speak to the issues that were raised. And I just want to remind everybody, like, the committee deals with the variances before us. I understand that emotions sometimes run high, but we don't get involved in those issues. So just throwing that out there.
Sure, I think this, the rebuttal will be a combination of myself and the owner. I can.
Yep, that's fine. Go ahead.
I can speak on reply to the parking issues that the neighbor has arrived, meaning there doesn't seem to be any objection from Transportation. Therefore, I'm not sure what to add more than that. On his comments on more people, more issues, the city is looking towards and creating all these studies of intensifying the neighborhood. So it's something that one way or another would have to be dealt with. But again, mild or gentle intensification of the neighborhood is what the city and the official plan seems to be seeking for. In regards to the other issues that he arose, talked about already, that up to Damon to reply and rebuttal of him not contacting him or other items.
I have a question. These units are currently occupied, right? And if so, assuming they are, do all of these tenants have cars?
They are occupied. I don't know about the car situation. Damon will be able to reply to that.
Okay. Damian?
Hello, no, they do not all have cars. They're all long-term tenants. As long as we've been owners, there have not been four vehicles associated with the property.
So there's two vehicles associated with the property right now then, or how many vehicles?
There are, there are two vehicles, two in the garage and one street parking.
Okay, and they have a permit for street parking, I assume, or?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you have any questions for the agent or the owner? Ms. Chan?
I want to ask about the second and the third floor balconies. On your drawings, it seems that on the elevation, the rear elevation and side elevation, you seem to indicating there's some privacy screen. But on your plan, you did not have. So are you planning to have some privacy screen on those balconies? I think it's.
There should be. There are privacy screens.
Yeah, so you.
So they're, they exist already?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Along the north side on the second floor too?
Right there.
Yeah, that's the first floor. And then there's the second floor, the north side. So on the second floor, which is a skinnier, yeah. If you look at the plan, there's a balcony on the north side. And there's a way, yes, that's the first floor, right? Go up one more. Yes, you know, there's a balcony, yes. So that has a privacy screen on the north side along the north side already?
You said yes, right? We kind of couldn't hear you.
Oh, okay.
I think, I think the agent said that there is screening.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, panel members? Okay, we're ready to take it into committee for a decision then. Any comments? Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. I'm happy to start. I think that, I think if we look back at the variances, they are relatively minor. And I understand the concerns of the neighbors, but I think that this does, excuse me, have relatively widespread neighborhood support. And I think it reflects, as the applicant showed in his materials, that there are many instances of houses with multiple units. And I think that's the nature of this neighborhood. And there's always an adjustment, but I do think that the city. Uh and there's always an adjustment, but I do think that the city um is supporting this kind of. Gentle intensification through its efforts. So I I think these are minor variances that are being requested. Um and I I would commend the applicant's mapping, I think that that was helpful in understanding the. Built context in the area. So I I'd move approval of the application subject to urban forestry condition two and the planning condition.
Okay, so the motion has been moved with the forestry condition and planning condition by Mr. Reed. Do I have a second or? Uh Ms Chan, s- uh all um all in favor? Okay, this carries unanimously, the application has been approved. The next item is item number four. Forty-three Cecil Street, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Uh we only have the agent as a speaker, we have one variance before us for soft landscaping, uh do I have the agent on the line?
Hi, good morning, Madam Chair, my name is Mateen Magadam, and I'm from Artos Development.
Uh good morning. I don't think we need a presentation, any questions, uh panel members? Mr. Solomon and then Mr. Reed.
I I just did not understand the variance for soft landscaping, I thought that the site plan actually showed a large lawn. Area, so maybe the applicant can just explain that, please?
Certainly, uh so the existing condition is a mixture of deck and concrete. Um but because we proposed to block off, uh to square off the rear, as you can see on the proposed site plan. With the uh where it shows the addition, that triggers a variance, so even with our um proposal to. Basically convert the entire backyard to lawn, we still can't meet the fifty percent, so. I am showing the existing condition and that's what the uh zoning um notice is capturing. The existing condition, but then I went back and said, okay, we can basically convert the whole rear to lawn, and that would put us at. If you go to page three, where it shows the area counts, you can see the rear yard soft landscaping. With the rear converter is at forty-three percent roughly, forty-two point seven nine. So we're willing to convert it to lawn, uh but we still can't meet it.
But I guess the variance is for zero percent.
Which is to keep it as existing and not convert it to lawn.
Mr. Reed, Mr. Reed, you had a question?
Yeah, so I, thank you, Chair. I had the same question, um so to the applicant, would you, are you willing to change your? Variance request to forty-two point seven percent?
Absolutely, yeah, that's what we proposed in the set.
Okay, great, and what would that be in square meters?
Uh sixty, it's on page three, it would be sixty-four point fifteen square meters, just shy of the minimum fifty percent.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so you're amending your variance to forty-two point seven percent, which equals sixty-four point one five squared square meters.
Correct.
Okay. Ms Chan, did you still have a question?
Oh no, uh I that was my, that was my question, and I'm ready for uh to move a motion.
Okay, well, um Mr. Magadam, anything to add? We're ready to go into committee to make a decision on the amended application.
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay. All right, Ms Chan, go ahead.
Yeah, with that revision and there's uh there's only one variance, I don't think I will have any problem. And with I'm the amended uh variance, I move for approval with no con- no any other conditions.
Okay, do I have a second or? Mr. Solomon? Okay, so motion to approve the amended variance, as I mentioned earlier, moved by Ms Chan, seconded by Mr. Solomon, all in favor. This motion carries. Okay, um to our deputy secretary treasurer, can I do the next four together? Because it's all pertaining to the uh to a garage, attached garage for four properties, and the only one that has a a condition. Is the first one for forestry number two.
Through you, Madam Chair, that's fine, just be mindful that there is different variances, you know, throughout the four.
Okay.
So just, and then maybe what we'll do is um.
Wait, if you want us to uh go through them, like for the motion separate, I'm okay with that, but it's the same agent and it's all one project, okay?
That sounds great.
All right, um so we're going to deal with items five, six, seven and eight. Um together, it's for um these garages are all attached. Uh and it looks like all the homeowners are working together with the same agent, so for each of those, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey. Site plan, floor plans and elevation. And for the first one, which is one fifty-seven Colbeck Street, we have forestry number two. One fifty-five Colbeck, three forty-eight and three fifty Willard do not have any uh conditions attached to them. Do I have the agent on the line?
Hi, Nafisa, you've been unmuted?
Mr. Zangabadi, are you there? I'm hearing like a really strange echo. Hear it, or is that out there? Okay. Can you see him? Yeah?
Uh to you, Madam Chair, I'm just going to try and give him a call.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello?
Hi, is this Nafisee?
Yes, speaking, I was unable to speak through the microphone.
Okay, I can hear you now, so if you, I assume you were listening, so we're going to um. Uh have, if there are any questions from the members, we're going to deal with all four properties. But we will do it as separate motions for each one, and the only one that has a condition is one fifty-seven Colback, which is forestry number two. And uh before I go to my members, if you can just identify yourself for the record, please.
Y- y- yes, my name is Nafisa Zangabadi, I'm the agent for all four property.
Okay. Panel members, do you have any questions for the agent on this appli- on these four applications? Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. Um yeah, a simple question, just wondering how, what is being proposed differs from what's there currently? In the in the garage area.
Uh nothing actually has been changed, the only thing is that the location of the garage has been changed, just to comply with the setback, because the existing garage was touching the property line. So uh when we tear down the uh walls, we're gonna just build a new one, just a little bit further from the property line. Um so it's it's been moved a little bit and it's been increased on one of the garages for about almost three feet. And as in smaller on the other side, so basically it's the same footprint, just has been moved.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, panel members? All right, um Nafisee, we don't have any other questions, we're ready to take um all four properties um into committee. Anything you wanna add that's not in the submissions?
Uh no, thank you, I think everything has been sent already.
Okay, so panel members, um let's start with one fifty-seven Colback Street, and as I said, it has forestry condition number two. Um any comments on this one, Ms Chan?
Yeah, I don't have any uh negative comment, I think that this is a very unusual site, and it's actually the only way it works that if all of them. Do it together, and I I think this is the case, and I I move for approval uh uh the four of them except the. Uh number five is forestry condition number two, yeah.
Okay, so can we do it this way then, or do you wanna say it's totally, okay, so Ms Chan is moving approval for. Um one fifty-seven Colback, one fifty-five, three forty-eight Willard and three fifty Willard. The only um difference is that one fifty-seven has forestry condition number two, so do I have a second or for that motion? Mr. Chang, um so, the motion was moved by Ms Chan, seconded by Mr. Chang, all in favor. Okay, so all four of those applications have been approved. All right, the next item is item number nine. Nine ninety-five Dufferin Street, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. And we have presentation materials from Mr. Brander, the agent. Do I have the agent on the line? I'm not showing any other speakers. You there, Mr. Brander?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Hi, um I don't think we need a presentation, let me see if there are any questions. Panel members, any questions for Mr. Brander? Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I just had a question about the um. Uh roof, excuse me, the rooftop balcony and and if you have any screening incorporated into that.
Mr. Brander?
Yeah, um no, at this time, we just have a guardrail on the um south, east and west side. It's uh, I guess it's screening by virtue of the the pop-up to to access the roof. Um it screens to the north, which is the the property that's closest to the edge there.
Okay, so there'd be no direct overlook from the third floor balcony and to interior yards?
Correct, it's recessed on all other sides.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Solomon?
Yeah, my question deals with um is that is an apartment building with five units of permitted use? I think you indicated so in your in your uh letter.
Certainly, through you, Madam Chair, yeah, uh apartment buildings are permitted uses in this area. And should this have been constructed new, it would have been uh deemed an apartment building as a new construction and. Um begs the question, why not um add to the existing structure in a similar fashion?
Uh so it wasn't clear to me then why variance one is needed, if an apartment building is a permitted use, then why come in as a. Under secondary, you know, secondary suites rather than it's just the the use is permitted, I it it just wasn't clear to me about that.
Certainly, uh through you, Madam Chair, the um the zoning is um reviewed in a way that if you're adding to an existing building. Um some examiners will deem uh additional dwellings as secondary suites, even though they don't meet the full definition of. Being uh contained within and subordinate to the existing original dwelling. But uh the nature of the proposal, whether it's an addition or new build, is identical when it's finished form to an apartment building.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, we're ready to go into committee, Mr. Brander, anything to add before we do so?
No, happy to answer any other questions.
Okay. Panel members, we're in committee. Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. Um I think this is an area that's in in real change and with a lot of density coming to it, especially immediately across the road. Um multiple towers, so I think that this is a good proposal in adding um density at a lower level and. And resulting in in good-sized units, I think, that are uh that are livable. And so I think I think the variances being requested are minor, and um I move approval of this application with no conditions.
All right, do I have a second or? Mr. Chang? Okay, so motion to approve, moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Mr. Chang, all in favor. That carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, item number ten. Three one three Caledonia Road, we have a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, revised site plan, floor plans and elevations. Covering letter from the agent, we have correspondence in opposition from three oh five, three eleven, which is adjacent. As well as three fifteen, someone who didn't provide an address, as well as three nineteen and three twenty-one Caledonia. I'm showing one speaker in support, uh do I have the agent on the line?
Yeah, I am on the line. I'm gone.
Hi, um before we go any further, um I believe that you're deleting variances. And if if uh I know this was in your submissions, but the notice still went out with all the variances, so you're deleting. If you can correct me if I'm wrong, deleting variance one, three, five, six and seven? Is that correct, and we're left with um two variances?
It is, it is, well, y- yes and no, yeah, we were deleting um in in um. In negotiations with the with the next door neighbor, the adjoining property, uh unfortunately, the negotiations happened just a little bit too late, so. We removed um a bunch of the variances, but unfortunately, there was a couple that were also added, so we got the zoning review. And it was just a little late, so we're actually looking for a deferral.
Okay, great, cuz I was gonna say, if you're adding variances, like we could have dealt with deletions, but not if you're adding, so um.
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
Yeah, exactly, and 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 we also didn't, I didn't see any of those, those letters of opposition. They, there was no letters of opposition in unless they were sent in the last couple days, but there was nothing in the in the file when I checked. A week ago, so that's also, you know.
Okay, well, this will give you a chance to deal.
In order to be, yeah.
Yeah, it'll give you a chance to deal with it, okay. All right, so you're asking for a deferral and then um.
Yeah.
To I just for staff, do you have Mr. Paulos on the line? Okay, just give me a second, I'm just gonna go to the speaker that's listed, uh it is a supporter, but just. To let him know that we're not dealing with this today. Hi, Jason?
Hi there, uh my name is Jason Paulos, we are the uh neighbors uh adjoining to the semi-detached property at three fifteen Caledonia. Um we did send a letter of support with the understanding that some of the variances are gonna be deleted.
Yeah, so just not, just to cut you off, but in the interest of time, if you were listening, we're not dealing with this application.
Understood.
At all, we're just, um so I just wanted to make sure that you understand, we are going to be voting on a deferral now because of. The change and addition of some variances as well as the deletions.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, um panel members, uh Ms Chan?
Yes, uh I move for deferral for the applicant so that they can uh 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 produce new variances or uh. New agenda and also have the chance to address to the oppositions.
Okay, so Ms Chan moves a motion to defer to give the applicant an opportunity to come in with all the corrected variances. As well as undertake discussion with the opposition in the neighborhood. Uh do I have a second or for that? Mr. Chang? Okay, so that's moved by Ms Chan, seconded by Mr. Chang, all in favor. Okay, that motion carries unanimously. Okay, item number eleven is one eighty-seven Winiva Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, as well as revised site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have a map of comparable committee of adjustment decisions from the agent. We have email correspondence from planning, uh I believe they're asking for screening on the third floor terrace, north and south side. Uh which is shown on the revised plans, and I believe it's frosted glass. We have uh in our supplemental, we received form letters uh in support from number eighty-seven or one eighty-five, rather. Which is adjacent as well as one ninety-one and one eighty-nine is uh in opposition. And they are listed as a speaker. Do I have the agent on the line?
Uh yes, it's Glenn Rubenoff, uh agent for the owner.
Um just one second, Mr. Rubenoff, uh do you have the opposition? Okay, Mr. Rubenoff, we do have the speaker on the line. Um if I could ask you to do a presentation, no more than five minutes, please.
Okay, uh thank you very much, uh yes, this is an application for a um. Uh seconds, a two-story rear addition um and a um an alteration. On the uh uh rear third-story addition with a terrace, um we did be with with planning and we did discuss the issues related to privacy. Which is what the uh neighbor who uh I I guess is about to speak had concerns with, so that's where the request from planning. I came in to ask for some privacy uh um measures put in place, which have been proposed and submitted. Um and of course, you had the letters of support from the adjacent uh neighbor at one eighty-five and 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 of course, one ninety-one. Um I think that based on the, you know, the concerns expressed with regards to the size of the unit. Uh this this is, this falls within um, you know, comparables in terms of 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 square footage. The types of variances we're requesting, we have three variances. They're not out of character with what's being redeveloped in the area. I think the sensitivity of privacy has been addressed. And I feel that this proposal is in keeping with, with the zoning by law and that the proposed variances are minor in nature. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rubenoff, let's go to the opposition.
My name is Faith Cochran. I'm at one-eighty-nine Winiva Avenue, adjacent to the, at two-one-eighty-seven. My house is, or our house, my husband and I, is semi-detached. So we have no windows on the north side. The street is a northwest street. So light is very dependent on where the sun is, because it's, you know, we get light in the back at beginning of the day, light in the front at the end of the day. And the only light we get throughout the day is from the windows on the south side. There's one on the main floor, from which very little light comes because it's blocked by the second story of one-eighty-seven Winiva. The window on the second floor does get, it does get light for a good part of the middle of the day. And that window fills the hallway and the stairwell with light, so it brings light into the main floor as well. So one of my concerns is the third-floor addition potentially blocking light from that window. Currently, the view is of the wall of one-eighty-seven and the sky above, and I'm concerned it's going to block that as well. Also, the potential of less light in the backyard. So I was wondering if, if there's any, I mean, I'm, if I'm extrapolating based on the second-story addition that was, that's already been built, about the loss of, some loss of light already. So if, if, if no light will be lost, I'd be very happy for them to go ahead. From what I see, I believe there will be a loss of light. And this is a neighborhood with, as you, as you probably know, old houses, smaller windows, the alleyway between our house, because one-eighty-seven is built almost right on the property line. It's very close to one-eighty-nine, my house. And then also, the second concern is privacy, which I hear the agent spoke to. But the terrace is on the top of the second-floor addition and so it's, it's, the second-floor addition I know is within code, but the terrace being on top of it brings it out quite a bit into the backyard, so. And it's also very close to the property line on the north side. So I'm concerned about, about privacy from the terrace as well.
Okay. You are aware that, or I'm not sure if you are, that there is a condition from our planning department to put screening on the north and south sides of the third-floor terrace? And that it's already showing on the plans as frosted glass, which will, you know, mitigate some of the privacy issues?
Yes, I'm aware.
Okay.
I'm also, sorry, the one other thing is I wonder about with, I didn't realize it was going to be frosted glass. I'm not sure if that was the case in the initial plan that we saw last year. But I am happy to hear that because I was also concerned about the height of the screening further blocking light. But with frosted glass, I don't have that concern.
Okay, well, we can have the agent confirm that. Let me just see if my panel members have any questions for you. Any questions? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Rubenoff, can you speak to some of the issues, well, the issues raised about the shadowing and also confirm that it's frosted glass?
Yes, thank you. The, you know, third-story addition is in, is in the it sounds like they're more, they're more, they're more of a concern related to the rear addition. And the rear addition extends beyond the main amassing of their house. So it's not, it's not, in essence, close to where their building is. But I do want to point out that on the elevations that were, the revised elevations that were submitted, there is a note that one-point-five-meter-tall frosted glass, frosted glass privacy screen along entire northern edge of the third-floor terrace. So that is on the drawings that were submitted to the committee. Because that is, you know, that's a critical point. We want to make sure that we're not taking away any further light, but still, but providing privacy. And, and I think that that's one of the reasons why planning asked us to provide the privacy, but the idea of the glass was something my client felt was an appropriate way of reducing the impacts by, by making it a privacy glass as opposed to a wall. And, you know, the, you know, we don't have a, an overall height variance. Just, just to be clear, it's really just a wall height variance for, you know, you know, for the extension. But I, you know, it is something that I feel like the concerns expressed, we're not going any closer to them. In fact, we're moving, you know, the, their building kind of shifts back as it goes back. And I feel like it will have limited impact on their, on their, on their lighting from the addition.
In comparison, the old versus the new from a shadow perspective, is it, you think the impacts will be similar?
Yeah, it's gonna be similar. I don't think there's gonna be any significant reduction in the light coming into their, into their backyard.
Okay, any other questions, panel members for the agent? All right, we have no more questions. We're ready to take it into committee for a decision. Mr. Solomon? You're muted.
Yep, thank you. I, I think the variances are minor in nature and what's being proposed is appropriate. And the condition of community planning for the screening, I think, will help mitigate any overlook concerns. So I would move approval subject to community planning conditions.
Okay, and Ms. Chan seconds. So motion to approve, including the planning condition for screening, opaque glass screening or frosted glass on the third-floor terrace, north and south sides. Moved by Mr. Solomon, seconded by Ms. Chan, all in favor? Okay, this carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number twelve, ninety-five Waverly Road. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, a revised site plan, map of comparable committee of adjustment decisions from Mr. Rubenoff is back again. Five form letters in support from residents on Waverly, including number ninety-seven, which is adjacent. And I don't show any opposition speakers this time. Are you there again, Mr. Rubenoff?
Yep, thank you. That's Glenn Rubenoff again, yes. Yeah, this application, they spoke with all their neighbors and they and I feel that the variances before you are pretty straightforward for what's, for what's proposed.
Okay, you're speaking on behalf of the owner, correct?
Yes, I am, yes.
Let me see if the members have any questions. Any questions, panel members, for Mr. Rubenoff? I'm not seeing any questions, sir, so we're ready to go into committee. Anything you want to add that's not in the submissions? Are you there? Or did I lose you?
Sorry, I was, I was muted.
Yeah, okay.
No, I, I think, I, I think it was done sensitively for the lot. And I, and I think that the conditions are, that this will just reinforce the neighborhood. And provides, you know, a more functional home for my client.
Okay. All right, let's take it into committee for a decision. Panel members? Mr. Chang, did you want to weigh in on this one?
I think the application is pretty straightforward and pretty sensitive. It's good that they have supporting letters as well. So I would like to move a motion to support this application.
Okay, so Mr. Chang moves a motion to approve the application and Mr. Reed seconds that, all in favor? Okay, that carries unanimously. Item number thirteen, twenty-three Garnock Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, a covering letter from the agent, as well as presentation materials and a tree inventory plan from the agent. And forestry is asking for condition number one. Okay, do I have the agent on the line?
Yes, my name is Alexia Hawes from Denegri Besai Studio.
Alexia, are you amending variance number one to fifty-one percent?
Yes.
Okay, so you're amending variance number one to read fifty-one percent, which equals seven-point-three-two meter squared?
Yep.
Okay. Panel members, there aren't any opposition speakers. I don't think we need a presentation. Any questions on the amended application? Mr. Reed?
Thanks Chair. Maybe it's just based on the, the particular zoning of this area, but is there not a rear yard self-landscaping variance that would be required from this application?
Well, because we're only in the front yard, these were the only two variances that we were given, because we're not touching the rear landscaping.
Okay.
Any other questions, panel members? Okay. Alexis, or Alexia, we're ready to take this into committee. Anything you want to add that's not in the submissions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're in committee, panel members. Ms. Chan?
I'm glad that they actually increased the soft landscaping as much as they can. I'm happy with the change and before street condition number one, I'd like to move for approval.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the amended application with four street number one, moved by Ms. Chan. Do I have a second or? Mr. Chang? Okay, so that's moved by Ms. Chan, seconded by Mr. Chang, all in favor? Okay, that carries unanimously. Item number fourteen, two-zero-six-seven Gerard Street. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Email correspondence from planning asking for a condition. And they're actually asking for variance number three related to the front yard setback, be limited to the proposed partial front porch enclosure and constructed in accordance with the dimensions shown on drawing A zero-four, the east elevate, the site plan, as well as the east elevation. And also that the, a condition that the front yard setback variance apply only to the enclosed front porch, so that the porch remains one-story only. And because any other additions above that porch would create massing issues. There are no opposition speakers. Do I have the agent on the line?
Yes, hello, my name is Stan Zalewski.
Hi. You're aware of the planning conditions?
I didn't hear that, sorry. Just as you were unmuted.
I'm gonna ask staff to put it on the screen. Okay, can you see it?
Install a private screen, north and south edges of the rear. Sorry.
It's, no, no, not the top one, just yours, the two, the bottom, the bottom two, yeah, for item fourteen, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so we're talking about following the drawings which we submitted.
Basically, they're just tying it to, you know, what it is you're intending to do anyway.
Yep, absolutely. The only thing is, are we really, are concerned about having that, the ability to add that extension on the front, which is in line with the neighbor's enclosed porch? But yeah, we have no reason to go anything beyond that, of course.
Okay, I think they just want to make sure.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Let's see if the members have any questions for you. Panel members, do you have any questions for the agent? No? Okay, we have no questions. We're ready to take this into committee, Mr. Zalewski. So is there anything you want to add that's not in the submissions?
No, not right now, thank you.
Okay. Panel members, we're in committee. Mr. Solomon? And then Mr. Reed?
Yeah, I'm gonna move approval of the variances. I believe they are minor in nature and put a condition subject to community planning conditions.
Okay, Mr. Reed, were you seconding? I thought I saw your hand up. Okay. So the motion to approve, including the planning conditions, moved by Mr. Solomon, seconded by Mr. Reed, all in favor? That carries unanimously. Are you in favor, Mr. Chang? Yeah, Mr. Chang, are you in favor? Okay, so that carries unanimously. Item number fifteen, twenty-six Bule Crescent. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, an arborist report prepared by Canopy Consulting. We have correspondence from the TRCA and they were looking at the plans dated the twentieth of November twenty-twenty and then also of the eighth of March twenty-twenty-two. So they've been dealing with, with the applicant. We have email correspondence from Ravine and Natural Protect, Feature Protection. They don't have any conditions. Support from number twenty-six, the owner. Correspondence in opposition from number twenty-four, which is adjacent, as well as the Swansea Area Rate Payers Association. And I'm showing one speaker and that would be the Swansea Rate Payers Association. Do I have the agent on the line?
Yes, speaking. My name is Hung.
Hi Hung. Do you have these opposition on the line? Okay, so I'm gonna need you to do a presentation, no more than five minutes, and then we'll go to the opposition.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, members of the committee. My name is Hung Pham from SWS Engineering. I am the agent representing on behalf of the homeowners at twenty-six Bule Crescent. We have two wood decks and a accessory building that is located in the backyard. The accessory buildings and decks are existing and was present at the time of purchase of the property. We are here to seek seven minor variance items. The first is to reduce the soft landscaping from twenty-two percent, from the required fifty percent. The second item is to reduce the distance of the ancillary building from the main house to zero-point-five-nine meters, from the required one-point-eight meters. Item number three is to increase the allowable height of the ancillary building by a difference of one-point-three-two meters. Item number four is to increase the floor area of the ancillary building to twenty-four-point-nine meters from the allowable ten square meters. This also ties into item number five. So since we are asking to increase the floor area of the ancillary building, we're asking to increase the allowable lot coverage of the building to twenty percent. Item number six, to reduce the minimum rear set, rear yard setback of the ancillary, ancillary building to seven-point-two-five meters from the allowable eight-point-one-seven, so a difference of nine, zero-point-nine-two meters. For item number seven, we're asking to reduce the side yard setback of the L-shaped deck to zero-point-seven-eight from allowable one-point-two meters, so a difference of zero-point-two-four-two meters. And also, please note, the clients took possession of the property since July fifteenth, two thousand twenty. So they were unaware of the decks and the ancillary, ancillary buildings that were constructed without a permit. And that is all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna go to the opposition and then we'll have you back.
I do, I do have a question.
Oh, sorry Nimrod. Go ahead.
If we can just put up the site plan, because I had a question on the dimensions of that accessory building. So if we can just zoom in on that accessory building, the dimensions shown on the site plan shows that I think is four-point-five-seven meters by two-point-four-four meters. And so that would mean it's like eleven meters squared, but I think And so that would mean it's like eleven meters squared, but I think what chart is showing and what your variance is for like almost twenty-five square meters, so I'm not quite sure whether what you're showing on the plan is correct.
Um, I believe the zoning officer had taken the proposed deck that's attached to the accessory building as a twenty-four point nine.
Can you?
Sorry, um, yeah, so I believe the, the accessory building is taken as part of the, um, the proposed deck there as well to, um, yeah, to, to include that as the floor area, as a twenty-four point nine.
Just the piece that's attached to the house or, or all three pieces, or all three pieces?
It looks like it's only the, 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 it's, um, the two pieces there that are the five point one five and the four point five seven. At the top there is those two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions before I go to the opposition? All right, um, do you have the opposition on the line?
Hi Veronica, you've been unmuted.
Ms. Nguyen, are you there?
To you Madam Chair, I'm just going to try and give them a call.
Okay. Um, are there any questions while we're trying to get the opposition on the line? Any other questions or? No, okay. Ms. Nguyen?
Yes?
Hi, okay, um, do you have anything going in the bank, background, there's a bit of an echo?
Sorry?
Are you run, are you running something in the background, there's a bit of an echo?
Oh yeah, there's, um, my, uh, air conditioner, hold on. I didn't think, I was looking at fourteen, I thought it was number twenty-six.
No, you're fifteen actually.
Am I fifteen?
And we're, we're moving at a good pace today, so, which is really nice.
Okay, well, that's good, sorry, I was in making, making my breakfast.
Okay, well, if you can, you know, just take a break for a minute.
Is that better, is that better?
Yeah, that's good, so, um, if you can just identify yourself and then we'll start the clock and you'll have five minutes.
Okay, um, uh, Veronica Nguyen, I'm the president of the Swansea Area Repairers Association, which is a, a not-for-profit, uh, uh, community, uh, group advocating on behalf of, of the community. Um, rehousing, so, uh, the, 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 uh, what do you call it, the four tests are not met by this, uh, by the, by this, uh, construction. It's already existing and, but, um, but the intent of the application by the applicant is to maintain it as a, as a shed, but also to, uh, increase it to twenty, uh, about twenty-five square meters, uh, from its existing twelve. Uh, the, um, the, the, uh, the TRCA thinks it's a, it's a shed with two, with two decks, but of course that's, that's not necessarily so, uh, that's not what they're asking for. Uh, the, um, the engineers consider it, uh, to legalize the rear addition. So they, the, the engineers see it as an addition to the house. So the, um, the, the, unfortunately, uh, and the neighbors also thinks it's a bed and breakfast, uh, situation. So I checked with them. So, um, the, and also, uh, the, uh, the owners, uh, in a letter, if you put the letter from, uh, from, up from the, uh, to Director, uh, Noick, they, they suggest and request that because they want to make this office area and because of their, you know, to have an office area as an extension of their house. So in other words, they're asking for an ancillary building, it is not meeting the, the intention of the, the official plan or the zoning. But it, it also has issues with, uh, as, as far as the impact on the neighborhood will be that it is a fire hazard in, in that it does not meet the, the fire code. Uh, it's, uh, you know, because of its proximity and connection to the house, it's built as an ancillary building, but not, uh, not as an addition, following all the, the codes that go with, with additions. Uh, it also has, uh, it doesn't have access, it, it is surrounded by a fence, which is like, it looks like Fort Knox, because it's so high and it's surrounded by this fence. And there's only one, if you take, uh, if you put up the pictures, the photos that I have uh, in my, uh, presentation, you'll see how, how close it is and how connected it is. If you scroll down, okay, there, if you, if you make them bigger. Uh, okay, and then scroll down. Okay, scroll down some more. This is the, this is the door, the gate at the front of the house that, uh, that allows you to get into the backyard. And it is the only way that you would get into, uh, to, uh, to the, uh, what you would call if it was an ancillary building and if, or if it was an addition. So the, um, the, if you scroll down a little bit, this is the, uh, the existing deck. It, it's, it's, um, the deck, no, scroll, scroll up, scroll up, there you go, stop, 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 stop. This is a photo taken by me, the middle one there, is, uh, it, it shows you the, the deck that connects the house and it goes around and it's already existing, going around the house. But also, um, the, it, the ancillary building is further along, it's, it's further, it jumps out closer to the east, um, east side, uh, lot line. It's, uh, and, and because it is connected to the house, uh, in this way, it is definitely a, a fire hazard. Uh, also, it's, uh, not, not according to code as an ancillary building. Um, and, and certainly not as, as an addition to a house. Um, the, the, in the plan, if you go back up to the plans, uh, you will see that, uh, they, they ask for, they don't mention, they ask for a variance of, um, for the ancillary building to be twenty, I think it's about twenty-five, five meters squared. But they, but in the, in the plans, they, uh, they, the deck that, 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 that is existing is already twelve, uh, square meters. So if you add the two, if you do the math on both the existing building, ancillary building and the, and the deck, you come up with, uh, twenty, I think it's twenty-four point nine.
Um, Ms. Ms. Nguyen, you're at five minutes.
So I just wanted to say that it just in keeping, it's, it's a hazard to the, uh, the neighborhood and the trees at the back of the building, plus it is not in keeping with the intention of the, of what is supposed to be an ancillary building, but is in reality an addition to the house.
Um, I, I just, I, you may not have been listening because you thought your item was a bit later, but one of the members did ask about the, um, twenty-four point nine meter square, uh, variance. And the, uh, the agent explained that the zoning examiner actually included the deck, the decks as part of the square meters, so they are not increasing the size of the building. I mean, it's, it's strictly for the existing situation, I just wanted to clarify that. So the decks are included as part of, of the ancillary building for some reason.
Yeah, can I ask a question then, is, it, does that mean that, uh, that down the road, they could put, they could put up, because it's on the variance as twenty-four point nine?
Yeah, that, that's like.
They take up the deck and put in, uh, add in addition to the ancillary building, right?
I'm, I'm gonna ask staff to weigh in on this one, that's a good question.
Through you Madam Chair, we could, um, revise the wording to the variance for number four and include the ancillary building shed and attached deck has a total floor area of twenty-four point nine square meters.
That's good.
Yeah, that would kind of prevent, uh, what you're suggesting from happening, because that, that's a very good question. But the variances are strictly to deal with existing conditions, um, they're not adding anything. They're actually rectifying something that was done by previous owners.
But they, but the, the connecting disc, the, the connecting dis, deck, that, you know, the one, the L-shaped one? That's new and that, that's actually attaching the, the, uh, what do you call it, the, the ancillary building to the house.
Yeah, and that's probably why the zoning examiner interpreted it as, as part of the floor space, that whole thing.
No, 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 but that's not the, the side one, it's not the.
Oh, I, well, okay, maybe we're talking about.
Yeah, two different things.
One of my members, I think, has a question for you or a comment.
Yeah.
So, uh, I'd like to make a comment, uh, if you look at the roof plan, um, I, I do not know whether it's a good idea to, to, um, alter variance four. I'm not too sure, because the part, if you look at the roof plan, the part that connecting to the, uh, house and between the house and the shed is a cover area. I'm not too sure whether the planning department actually included that, because it's a cover area. So I'm not too sure you can just go and change number four. Uh, maybe they include the whole area as a, as, like, a whole structure, yeah.
It's, it's very ambiguous, I find the, the whole thing very ambiguous.
Okay.
Uh, it's very, it's, it's, you know, even we, we had difficulty looking at what the map was, you know, because they, they, they changed from south to east and whatever, you know, like in, in the setbacks. And, uh, a rear yard setback for the building, it's not, it's on the east, they say east side, but the east side is not the, is not the back of the building where the ancillary building is. So it's, it's really quite ambiguous.
Okay, Ms. Nguyen, I'm going to go back to the agent, um, and let him speak to these issues we talk about. And then, um, after that, I'll, I'll go back to staff just to revisit the wording on that variance. Maybe, maybe not, but let's, let's go back to the, uh, agent and have him go over what we've just been talking about and address your concerns. Okay, Mr. Pham, are you there?
Yes.
So you've heard, yeah, you've heard the conversation, so if you can elaborate and speak to the issues raised.
Okay, um, so, uh, again, like this, um, whatever that is here now, we are not adding anything to it, um, as committee had, um, clarified. Uh, and our roof there as well, it's not connected to, um, the house, it's just a overhang that's on, over the accessory building. Again, everything, everything is just, uh, existing and we're just trying to rectify anything that needs to be fixed. We're not add, adding anything on and we're not changing anything else. Uh, are there any other questions that you need me to clarify on?
Yes, Mr. Chang has a question and then Mr. Solomon.
Okay, uh, I, I think your application i- is pretty simple, but then I'm just wondering about the implication that, of the variance that we're looking at, you're asking for almost, uh, you know, fifty percent of landscape down to twenty-two. Uh, I'm just trying to see that, are the deck necessary to reduce such a huge percentage of soft landscape at the back? Yeah, well, how would you comment on that, how would you compensate, what, 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 what you, what you were going to do to compensate the loss of those soft landscape?
Um, I would say some of the existing patio stones. If we can remove those, would that be acceptable to increase the soft landscape and change it back to, say, grass?
How much, but how much would you be talking about then?
Let me see, we're sitting at twenty-two. Uh, wha- whatever that is required, like whatever that is acceptable. I, I couldn't throw out a number there, but of course I know that twenty-two percent is not acceptable.
Well, I, we, we can give you a number, but, uh, what I'm trying to see is thirty square meters is roughly about your thirty, your twenty-eight percent, you know, difference that we're looking at, right? So what would you think is the number that the committee would accept? I think I'll let you to decide it to deceive, I, I'm just suggesting, like, perhaps the area bounded by your proposed decks, that seven point one five meters.
Yes, yeah, uh, some, and.
If you can give us a number, I think it will be more comfortable, I really don't want to set a precedent case of approving such a low self landscape.
Yes, yes, I understand, I can increase that area by twenty meters. If I, uh, just did where the proposed deck, um, right where that area is, the seven point one five meters, um, uh, where both decks are walking down, like both the stairway. So if we change that to, um, grass area, I can change that to twenty-two, an additional twenty-two square meters.
So can you give me then what the variance would change to, the percent and the square meters?
Okay, um, I'm just typing a number right now.
Okay.
Uh, thirty-eight percent.
Okay, so you would be willing to amend it to thirty-eight percent?
Yes.
Variance number one, and, and what is that, square meters?
Uh, that is, let's see here, uh, fifty-two?
Fifty-two percent, then you don't need.
So, so fifty-two square meters, fifty-two square meters.
Oh, fifty-two, yeah, I'm like, then you don't need, okay, fifty-two.
Uh, so, yeah, fifty, well, it's fifty-two point seven.
Fifty-two point seven?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Chang, um, how does that sound to you?
Uh, I think it is acceptable, I'm happy to support the, the application with this change.
Yeah, Mr. Solomon has a question.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, the proposed, uh, decks, do any of them have a roof covering? Or are they, is, I'm just trying to understand how they, any part of the decks could be considered as accessory building shed? Uh, uh, are any of them covered by roof?
Um, no, it's only on the roof plan there that shows the overhangs of the accessory building. Um, that is the only covered part, but they are not, uh, supported by the deck. They're supported mainly on what's just by the accessory building itself. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, why are they considered GFA then, I mean, I don't understand. Okay, was there another question, I thought I saw a hand, Mr. Reed?
Thanks, yeah, that's my question too, and I'm, I'm not sure why that is. I mean, I think if we approve it, we could tie it to site plan, but maybe, is it something to do with the height of those decks and that they're attached to the ancillary building, is that, this is a question for the applicant, if he could clarify, if he knows.
Um, I'm actually not a hundred percent sure, but, uh, all I know is the height of the decks are, uh, one point two meters above existing grade.
Okay.
So, so they, they align up with, uh, the existing floor level of the house?
Right. Okay.
Ms. Chan?
Maybe this is a, a silly question, but, uh, we're looking at a shed with glass sliding doors and I, I guess, I don't understand the purpose of this shed. It sounds, it seems like it's a passage way? Uh, can you, what do you, what do, what do the people use it for now, uh, the, yeah?
Um, we, that, that is hard for me to answer as well, because again, like, the, the building was, um, existing, it was already built this way with the glass sliding doors. We're not sure what the purpose of it was used for, but as far as what we're applying it for is, we're using it as a accessory building, it's a shed, storage. Yeah, that type of thing, they're, um, that's the only use that would be.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, can I just go back to staff? Can you please repeat the word, suggested wording for, uh, variance number four? Or is there a different way to make sure that, um, to the, uh, the president of the Swansea Area Rate Payers point that they can't build a twenty-five square meter structure?
Through you Madam Chair, I believe perhaps we should leave variance number. Through you Madam Chair, I believe perhaps we should leave variance number four as worded. Uh in the public hearing notice and perhaps uh members may want to. Um if approved, tie to site plan and elevation plans, okay?
Okay, thank you. All right, panel members, uh and if there are no more questions, then let's take this matter into committee. Ms. Chan and Mr. Solomon.
Okay, yes, um um it it kind of a a strange application, but um with the um. With Aaron's suggestion to be uh to increase the soft landscaping, I think it's a a a really good change. And also um with the suggestion by the staff that we tie um the approval. To uh the site plans, uh the floor plan and also the elevations, and I'm happy to move for approval.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the amended application, um variance number one. Now will be thirty eight percent, which equals fifty two point seven meters squared. And tying it to site plan and elevations, moved by Ms. Chan, seconded by Mr. Solomon. Okay, all in favor, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, the next item is item number sixteen, thirty one Foxley Street. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have a photograph of the front yard of the subject property, I'm not showing any opposition speakers. Do I have the agent on the line?
Good morning, panel, my name is Monty Oliveira, I'm here representing thirty one Foxley Street, replacement design located at nine eleven Diamond Court Room.
Alrighty, good morning, um panel members, I don't think we need a presentation, any questions for the agent? Well, Mr. Doliviera, not seeing any questions for you this morning, um we don't need a presentation. Anything you wanna add that's not in the submissions?
I just wanna point out, most of our variances are quite minor, we need to take into consideration that. We're kind of following existing conditions on the home already, uh we're not actually proposing any real changes to the soft landscaping in the rear. Uh our addition is a third floor with a bit of a cantilever uh past the second floor below. So that's what kind of triggers this total change to the rear yard landscaping, even though all the hard landscaping areas are in fact existing. Areas, uh so there's not really any change there and our front yard setback is being taken to uh. In addition, happening in the basement below the existing front porch, so. From a front facade point of view, nothing there is really changing. So I I think everything else kind of speaks for itself, our building depth is also within the existing depth of the building. Uh we actually stepped their third square back five feet from that, so I think everything's kind of within the existing scope of the building itself.
Alrighty, um well, we're gonna take it into committee for a decision, panel members. Mr. Solomon.
Yeah, I think that the variances are minor in nature and I would move approval with no conditions.
Okay, do I have a seconder for that motion? Mr. Chang, so motion to approve, moved by Mr. Solomon, seconded by Mr. Chang, all in favor. That carries unanimously. Item number seventeen, four twenty two Wellington Street West. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, we have a covering letter from the agent. A heritage review by ERA Architects, parking and loading review by BA Group. We have email correspondence um from transportation, they don't have any concerns. And correspondence in support from um the Saint. Well, the Wellington Place Neighborhood Association as well as Allied Properties Management. Um and I didn't see any reports from Heritage, okay, uh do I have the agent on the line?
Uh good morning, Madam Chair, it's Anne Benedetti from Goodman's, representing the captain.
Okay, and you're speaking on, the the architect is just listed in case we need him, I guess, and you're speaking on behalf of the owner, is that correct?
That's correct, and we have both the owner and the architect present to answer any questions, but if the committee requires a presentation, I'm more than happy to give one.
I don't think we do, um any questions for the agent panel members? We actually have no questions, we're ready to take it into committee, we've we've read all the supporting materials. Which, thank you very much for your covering letter, so if there's anything to add that's not in the submissions, um we're ready to take it into committee.
Uh nothing to add, Madam Chair, we would say the variances individually and cumulatively meet the tests of the Planning Act and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're in committee, panel members. Mr. Reed.
Thanks Chair, um I agree that the the application is minor in um. In the impacts of the variances and the and the nature of the variances, and I I I personally think it looks like a very interesting building. And it's a nice adaptive reuse of an existing structure rather than um. Than something being knocked down and built to top, so I think it's commendable, um and I move that approval of the application with no conditions.
And Ms. Chan, you're seconding, so motion to approve, moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Ms. Chan, all in favor. That carries unanimously, thank you very much. Okay, our final item this morning is seven twenty nine Vaughan Road. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, two photographs of the front of the building. As well as a tree and presentation photos from the agent. We have email correspondence from transportation and they did not have any concerns. Um I am not showing any opposition speakers, do I have the agent on the line?
Morning, Madam Chair, it's Enzo Locasano from H D W G.
Uh good morning, I don't think we need a presentation, there might be some questions for you. Any questions, panel members? No, not seeing any questions, Mr. Locasano, we're ready to take it into committee for a decision, is there anything you would like to add before we do so?
Um no, I don't think so.
All right. Okay, panel members, we're in committee, Mr. Chang.
Okay, so I'll try this, uh I think the the application i- is very reasonable and straightforward, I would like to. Uh recommend the committee to hello.
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, sorry, suddenly changed the screen, I'm not sure.
No, no.
Sorry, yes, um now it's back to you, um yes, that's all right, we started again. Uh I would like to um move this, uh support and move this application. Um based on the fact that the application is very straightforward and simple and it complies with the general zoning laws.
All right, so I have a motion to approve the application, moved by Mr. Chang, seconded by Mr. Reed. He beat you to it, Mr. Solomon, um all in favor? Okay, that carries unanimously. So, the committee stands adjourned at eleven oh eight and I'll see you at two o'clock. It's a record.
Well, thank you.
Bye.